Good evening, everybody. The regular meeting of the August 30th, 2022, regular meeting of the Fairfield Board of Education is called to order. I'm the Chair, Christine Vitale. I'm joined tonight by Ms. Rotelli, Ms. Jacobson, Ms. Guernsey, Mrs. Gerber, interim superintendent, Dr. Tracy, Mr. Asa, Mrs. Max and Cannelly, Mr. Peterson, and Ms. Kelly. I ask you to all please rise for the pledge. Ms. Kelly, will you lead us in the pledge, please? Welcome to the first regular meeting of the 2022-2023 school year. The Board has met twice this summer for special meetings, primarily to discuss the racial imbalance. At our last meeting, we also elected our next superintendent of schools, Michael Testani. And just for the Board's notice and for the public, I have executed the contract. And as discussed at our last meeting and per our vote, his scheduled start date is November 1st. So I just wanted to put that out there as an update. And he will continue to begin the onboarding process and meet with staff and members of the community over the coming weeks. Very excited to begin work here. And with that, I will bring it to the public for any public comment. If anyone would like to give comment on agenda items, I invite you to come forward and give your name and address for the record. Each commenter will get three minutes. Okay, seeing none, just a reminder, we also take public comment before any action items. Okay, moving on to old business, approval of racial balance plan amendment. The Board of Education approved the racial balance plan amendment dated August 30th, 2022. Can I have a motion? Mr. Asa, second. Mr. Peterson, open it up to the Board for any further discussion.
Can I make just one?
Dr. Tracy?
Observation, Madam Chairperson. Thank you. You'll notice that a second paragraph has been added to the introduction to address concerns that you raised last time, that we make note of the fact that although this is primarily an elementary school issue, that it will have implications at the secondary level, including the equity training that we plan to do, as well as feeder patterns affected by redistricting. So that paragraph has been added. We fixed the typos, and it otherwise remains essentially as you saw it last time. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Tracy. Ms. Jacobson?
Not a comment on any changes to the plan that we had before us, but I was wondering, since we received the achievement data for 21-22, and maybe it's too crazy or too busy right now, but I didn't know if it was worth our effort to, before the September 8th submission, to add any pertinent information that we now have available so that it's like the most updated information possible. And if it's too busy or busy, it's just an idea that I had in terms of, since we have since received the achievement information and some of these other indicators that are listed for 2021, but not 21-22. And if we can't do it, we can't do it, but I just didn't know if it may be told a little bit more of a story as we submit this by September 8th. So I leave that to you and your discretion of whether you think that's important to do or not.
I think it's a good idea. We probably can do it. We have the data. Let me talk with my colleagues in the next day or two before this goes in and see if we can't update. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, seeing none, we will take it to the public. Any members of the public like to give comment on this item? Invite you to come forward. Seeing none, back to the Board for a vote. All in favor? Ms. Rotelli, Ms. Jacobson, Ms. Guernsey, Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Vitale, Mr. Asa, Mrs. Max and Cannelly, Mr. Peterson, Ms. Kelly. Motion carries nine zero. Thank you all, and thank you, Dr. Tracy and your staff, for your work on this over the summer. As we discussed at our last meeting, this is the plan that, you know, we will be presenting to the state, but there are a lot of action items in here. We will continue to engage the community. And as new dates get identified and new discussions get identified, we will be updating the public and the community by adding the pertinent data to our website on the racial imbalance webpage. And moving forward with any redistricting conversations, we'll be setting up a redistricting page, just so the public can be well-informed. All right, moving on to new business, approval of the CSDE Authorized Signature Change Form for the Bureau of Health, Nutrition, Family Services, and Adult Education. Dr. Tracy, that the Board of Education approved the signature change form for the Bureau of Health, Nutrition, Family Services, and Adult Education per the enclosure. Could I have a motion to put this before the Board? Mr. Asa, seconded by Ms. Jacobson. Dr. Tracy? Any?
Happy to sign for you. I've already signed it. I'm ready.
It's really just to authorize the signature. Any questions, discussion? Okay, all in favor of Dr. Tracy signing? Actually, I'll take it to the public.
Just come right up to the table.
And this is on, just for the signature, not on any agenda item, just on this motion? No, no, we already voted, we voted on that one already. Oh, sorry. Okay, that's okay. You can give public comment at the end of the meeting also. Okay, thank you. Any members of the public want to give comment on the signature change form? Seeing none, back to the Board for vote. All in favor? Motion carries nine zero. Okay, we're moving on to an update, summer maintenance projects. Mr. Papa George?
Been a busy summer, dozens and dozens of projects. And thank you, Angela, for all the work that you and your crew have done to position us to get our schools open yesterday. Appreciate it.
Well, thank you. So what you have at the table in front of you is similar to what you got last year. It's an update of the summer maintenance projects that were performed this summer. There's only a few photos with it this year, but we just wanted to make sure you guys could say some of our larger projects that were completed that we were a little proud of. The largest one being the Roger Ledlow Middle School roof, which is significantly completed at this time. We have a walkthrough scheduled for the punch list next week. There's a couple of maintenance things that need to be taken care of due to back order, but they will go in without a problem and without interfering with the school below. I don't know if you wanted to ask specific questions about the projects or just review, or if you wanted me to run through the list. I don't think you want me to sit here and run through the list.
Mr. Asa?
Could you maybe at least touch and highlight on any that had hiccups or are currently, you know, of note that you would say that should bring to our attention?
So that was going to be my second part of this, is not really on the maintenance side of the list that you have here, but there are some projects that are ongoing that have some hiccups that I was going to address if you had no questions on this list first.
Ms. Tracy, then Ms. Max and Cannelly.
I guess just the ones that say in progress with estimated date of completions, are those original estimated date of completions, or are they significant delays? And if so, what was the reasoning?
There's a combination. Some of them that have, for instance, the first one there, it says bir gym floor in progress, and it has a completion date of to be determined. That's because we have to work out a schedule, delay in materials, postpone the delivery of the ability to get it done over the summer period. Obviously, we're not going to rip up a gym floor during the school year, so that's why it says to be determined. So we'll end up setting a schedule once we have a bid back for a contractor.
Can I add something quickly to that?
Yes, Ms. Peterson.
Correct me if I'm mistaken, is this is also the school that has a second-floor boiler that we're going to need to remove a wall, a wall to get it out?
Correct.
Is this going to conflict with that? Are we going to fix the gym floor before we haul a boiler through there?
Two things. So first, we don't anticipate having the gym floor be an issue. Second thing is, we met with the engineers, and we believe we've come up with a plan where the boilers can be removed in sections, and it's going to be a little more work, but they feel that's the best way to do it. So they will come out the doors and down the stair, main stairwell of the building, as opposed to coming through the wall with a crane and a lift.
All right, thanks for clarifying.
One last follow-up. With regard to the expenditures and the timing, do we have any issues or red flags raised with timing of our spending the money and encumbrancing and whatnot? Is there any issue on any of these with the timing, or are we good to go?
There's no issues at this time, as long as we don't see delays in the spring. That shouldn't be an issue. We've always said that projects have to be begun before the July 1st date, so we don't anticipate that. As long as we don't get a ton of snow and push school through the end of June, then we don't anticipate an issue with projects starting right as we want them, the kids walking out one door and the contractors walking in the other door. Thank you.
Mrs. Max and Cannelly?
I'm just wanting to get the significance in terms of in design versus in progress. There's something rather insidious sounding about in design.
In design means it's actually with an architect, and it's being designed. So we haven't approved the designs of it yet. For instance, the, we took advantage of this end of school year to get an engineer and an architect, I should say, an architect involved with the concession stand project. So that's, that shows as in design, so that we are designing it now. Part of that process will be to come up with estimated costs. So we have a design in place, costs in place, before we enter into the budget season this year.
Okay, but then what about something that would appear to be a piece of equipment? So that the Tomlinson rooftop chiller, and then the Fitzhouse replacement at Ward, why are those design issues?
They're not issues, they're with, they're currently with the engineers, being designed for a better layout. One of the things that we've been doing as we replace equipment, the Fitzhouse unit will most likely be an in-kind replacement, one-for-one, but for instance, the Tomlinson roof units, or the Tomlinson one that's in here, we brought it out to design with an engineer because we realized that there's a better energy-efficient way to be doing what the equipment that's currently doing is not meeting all the new engineer and, excuse me, meeting all the requirements that we can do savings and we can do better than what was available when it was originally installed.
Just to be clear then, so projects that are in design phase, are there any that are in design phase now that you had anticipated would be further along at this point, or are they in design phase on target?
They're in design phase on target.
And just as my last question, is there anything on this list that you anticipate won't get done?
There is nothing at this time that would indicate that any of these projects would not be completed.
Thank you. Mr. Peterson?
Would this be a reasonable time to get an update on the Ledlow scoreboard, which I see here is in progress?
That is, it shows in progress. So the Ledlow scoreboard went out to bid. The bidders came in at almost double the budgeted amount for the project. So we've worked with the town, we've changed the scope of the work, and we're going to rebid it. That being said, I've also reached out to the gentleman, the company, I should say, that did the repair to the scoreboard in early spring, and they're going, they're scheduled to give us an appointment to come out and just verify that everything is still working the way it was fixed in the spring, so we don't have, anticipate any issues.
And just for clarity for people listening that may have missed some stuff, I had heard through the grapevine that the full digital interactive, you know, high-def display that we had, we're talking about during budget season, that like that entire idea has been shelved, and we're looking at a more standard scoreboard. Is that correct?
No, that's not correct. We are still looking at a full digital scoreboard for Ledlow High School.
But we were talking about one with the ability to show ads and photos and...
This, the scoreboard that we are spec-ing out will have that ability as well. It'll be very similar to the new billboards on I-95, where it flashes and changes. The scope that we are working to narrow down at this point was, when we put it out the bid, it was put out as a Ledlow High School replacement project for the scoreboard, and it was decided that maybe the Ward High School should be put in the bid as well, so we would have future funding availability for it, or at least have pricing availability for it. And we had such a tight timeline on the scoreboard because we were trying to get it done this summer. So the, a lot of contractors were not able to meet the timeframe to bid on the project. We only received two bids, when we had over, I believe, five or six people attend the pre-bid walkthrough. The Ward scoreboard added a bit of complexity to it, being that the Ward scoreboard is actually placed on the artificial turf field, so we'd have to pull up the turf field and get it recertified once the scoreboard. So it added a lot more detail that needed to be answered and addressed, and the contractors felt with our tight timeline, they couldn't get those numbers together to give us a good bid on it.
And down to brass tacks, what, the current status of the Ledlow scoreboard for the fall sports season, will it be operational?
As I mentioned, we, it was operational, it's still operational, and we still have the company that did the repair coming out to do a full kind of preventative maintenance on it to make sure everything is still operating. Thank you.
And Mr. Papa George, just some of our earlier conversations this year about the scoreboard, we were looking at working with a company that would provide the scoreboard as in return for receiving a portion of the ad sales. That is no longer part of the current bid, correct? That based on conversations with the town attorney and the purchasing department, that that needed to be, we couldn't take that approach?
So yes, that, taking that approach without going out to bid was what we decided was not the best interest of the town. However, in the bid package that we did put out, we did ask for recommendations and the ability to work with an ad company if we chose to do so for the new scoreboard. So it was included in the bid package.
Thank you for that clarification. Any other questions? Ms. Jacobson?
I'll follow up on that one. When you say it's going back out to bid, does that mean it hasn't gone to bid yet?
That is correct. It went out, it went out to bid, we got the bids back, we reviewed the bids, and we've had some delays, but we are working with the town.
What delays?
We're just trying to get some answers from the town so that we can move forwards with putting it back out to bid.
So you're waiting on the town?
Correct.
Okay. But you're prepared to have that out to bid already with whatever changes you were anticipating, and so that this is an issue on the town side?
Correct.
Okay. Do you have an answer on when they plan to put this up for bid? How fast of a turnaround are we going to ask for that bids to be turned around? Like, in other words, we're not going to give two months on this, right?
We're not looking at two months. We would like to give a reasonable amount of time. We believe one of the reasons with the low turnout for bids was that we did ask for a seven-day turnaround on the bid, or I'm sorry, 10-day turnaround. So we're going to try to extend it out. I do know that the, there were some phone calls made about some contractors who would have liked to have bid on it, but were unable to turn around a bid bond in less than 10 days from the time of the walkthrough. So that was, we're looking to extend the bid time, but not tremendously 30, 90 days, anything like that.
Okay, thank you. What is the delay on the town side in terms of getting this? Is there's questions that they have, or is, what is the exact issue?
So we've been going back and forth with the town purchasing department. We do work with the purchasing department to get it out to bid. I believe all the questions they had for us have been answered at this point, so I don't know if there's any delay or not anymore.
Okay. I'll follow up after that. Um, do you want to, going, still on the scoreboard, or? Okay. I have a, just, in terms of the pricing coming back higher, did you have any indication that supply chain issues was affecting that in terms of coming back higher than what you originally budgeted for back in January?
No, I do not believe it's a supply chain issue. I believe it was just the companies that were able to turn around quicker, felt that it was going to be a higher price tag to get a quicker return on the actual board. One thing to mention is that we've made very clear that once we get this bid out and back and awarded, as long as the weather hasn't changed, which I'm not, would, won't be, this is a project that could take place during school hours. We could block off and make this area safe, so they could take place. Obviously, we wouldn't want to do anything to not be able to have a scoreboard during events or games, but we've talked to some companies that could provide a temporary or portable-type scoreboard if something was down while we were doing the project.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead, Ms. Jacobson.
I'm just a couple more. Can you give us an idea of, I see the HVAC retro-commissioning is in progress? Just an idea of how much you've actually gone through, gotten through on that, and how much is left?
We have approximately three schools left to complete.
Great. And the last thing I wanted to ask about, I remember the Ledlow handicap lift in the press box, I thought that was replaced last year.
It was. I'll make a very long story short, is the company who did the project was bought out by a non-local company out of New Jersey. There is a code requirement that because it's an outside and it's enclosed, it needs a, the ability to make a phone call for an emergency. We had to bring in our low-voltage contractor to run phone lines out there, which we've done way back in July, but we've been fighting with the newly-owned company to get them back out to make the one termination they need to make. So it's there, it's operable, it just doesn't meet code because of a phone line issue that we are still fighting through. Someone's personal cellphone does not count, unfortunately.
Any other questions about the maintenance list? Dr. Tracy?
While Mr. Papa George is at the microphone, I've asked him to please say a word or two about the, some of the challenges we've had with, with the air conditioning, and we've had a couple of hot and troubling days. Since he's here, and I think you'll probably ask me about it, perhaps he could address it.
Absolutely. So I'm sure you guys are tired of hearing me saying it at this point, but a lot of issues come down to supply chain and being ability to get parts and equipment as needed. We've had some warm schools. We had Riverfield, which had some issues at the end of the school year. We thought we had them all up and running, and as of late this afternoon, I was told one of the units went down, so they're investigating why that happened. The Riverfield main office area was a unit that we had to wait for a compressor, but I'm under the impression that it was finished as of today. I have not gotten the end-of-day report on that, but I'm hoping first thing tomorrow morning to know that that is up and running, and they will also be out to take care, hopefully, of the Riverfield third-grade issue, which is hopefully going to be a small repair. Holland Hill, we had some warm days over the summer. That equipment was, for all intents and purposes, I would say, almost completely rebuilt. On the, one of the units on the roof was almost rebuilt completely. We actually talked about possibly pulling the unit and replacing it under warranty, but we were able to get the, the manufacturer rep out, and he was able to get it up and running and parts in. It's 75% running now, and they anticipate within the next week to have the last board they need to be up and fully running. The other school that has been coming up lately is McKinley Elementary School, and so we lost one of the chillers there over this, probably about two to three weeks ago, right before school started, we lost one of the chillers there, which in turn tripped the whole building power system, so we lost power to the building. We investigated further, and we've determined that it wasn't actually the chiller that was the problem, it was the building feed itself which was causing problems. So just Sunday before school started, on Monday, we lost power to McKinley again, and we were able to shut down the second chiller. So the room, the building is running, units are running, fresh air is moving, but the building is not chilling due to both the chillers being down at this point. We are working with UI because we have to do a pole shutdown so that we can investigate the switchgear and hopefully determine what is causing the problems. Train, which is the company that runs the chillers, believes that we may have have a loose connection on one of the feeds, so we're losing what they call a phase of electricity to the unit, which is, could have been what caused the damage to chiller one. In order to determine that, we have to shut down at the pole, pull all the covers off, and do torque testing and recertification of the breakers to hopefully determine where the issue is coming from.
So I know you're pushing your team and these contractors as hard as you can. It's uncomfortable in the schools that are mentioned. Dwight School was uncomfortable, McKinley. So we're doing what we can, and we're hoping after tomorrow that the weather will cooperate a little bit for Thursday and Friday, but I have to tell you, in places that don't have AC and that are facing the sun in the afternoon, it's uncomfortable.
Mr. Papa George, I just have, do you happen to know off the top of your head if the air conditioning unit at Holland Hill and Riverfield were also trained? Were they same manufacturer for these units?
They were not.
Okay. And the Riverfield roof, the emergency roof repair that was done over the summer, any issue with that?
No issues with that.
Okay, thank you. I mean, please just, Dr. Tracy, through you and Mr. Papa George, any updates on these conditions at McKinley? Please just let us know. I'm sure people are going to be, if any new information, just a memo.
Yep, we'll keep you posted, and Mr. Papa George's team, as I said, will keep working at it until we get it under control. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Papa George, for your team and for your work over the weekend to get our schools ready for opening yesterday. Okay, moving on, adoption of policies. The Board of Education adopt the following policies. Policy 411.1, 42111, personnel certified, non-certified, nondiscrimination, affirmative action, equal employment opportunity. Policy 4118.14, personnel certified, non-certified employees in section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973 entitled II of the Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990. Policy 4121, personnel certified, substitute teachers. Ms. Max and Cannelly, can I have a second? Mrs. Gerber? Mrs. Max and Cannelly?
Just as a reminder, these were simply title changes. I didn't receive any questions. I didn't really expect to receive any questions, but if there are any, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Any questions for Mrs. Max and Cannelly?
So it, that, just for the public, since, you know, this is not something people were paying attention to at the end of June, the policies had indicated the Executive Director of Personnel and Legal Services, which is no longer an existing title within our central office, it is now, and I might get this wrong, Executive Director of Human Resources, I believe, simply, so it was simply changing the title and also taking off the name. We'd included the name as well, which was unnecessary, and so that's all this is, is updating it to our current staff.
Mrs. Gerber?
So just to clarify, this is a technical change only, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any members of the public like to comment on this action item? Seeing none, back to the Board. All in favor? Motion carries nine zero. Moving on to the approval of minutes, the Board of Education approve the following minutes. June 14th, 2022, special meeting minutes. June 28th, 2022, special and regular meeting minutes. July 26th, 2022, special meeting minutes. Can I have a motion to approve? Mr. Peterson, a second. Ms. Guernsey, any questions or discussions on the minutes? Seeing none, back to the Board for a vote. All in favor? Ms. Jacobson, Ms. Guernsey, Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Vitale, Mr. Asa, Ms. Max and Cannelly, Mr. Peterson, Ms. Kelly, opposed? Mr. Rotelli, motion carries eight zero one. Thank you. Moving on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Tracy, the floor is yours.
Yes, thank you. One item that's not listed under the report on your agenda, but an important one, I wanted to thank Dr. Parrish and Dr. Zavojansik for the work that they did this summer to bring a very talented and capable new member to our district administrative team. And Dr. Zavojansik, if you'd like to come down and make the introduction.
James Zavojansik, Chief Academic Officer. The pleasure tonight to introduce to you and to the community Ms. Janine Goss, who will serve as our elementary director, as well as pre-K-12 literacy director. She impressed our central office and school-based committee through the multiple iterations of our interview process with her knowledge of research-based practices in literacy, school leadership, and school improvement. We're lucky to have her. She comes to us from Norwalk Public Schools. In her past, she has served as an elementary teacher, a literacy coach and leader, a building leader, as well as a central office leader in charge of humanities and literacy. We look forward to the work she's going to engage our staff and our administrators in in the future. We're lucky to have her, and I just wanted to welcome her aboard, and I'll give her the microphone now to speak. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. I am so humbled and so blessed to be here as part of your community. I have spent the last two days with Dr. Zavojansik, immersing myself in your elementary schools. I was able to visit all 11, including the pre-Ks over at Stratfield, and I'm probably not telling you something that you don't already know, but... but your buildings are vibrant places to learn. I felt so welcomed. I feel like I'm a member of your community already, and so I thank you for that. I really am looking forward to the work ahead. Your children are so well cared for. That was a comment I made as we left the 11th school today. They truly are wonderful places to be. So I really look forward to the work ahead, aligned with your strategic priorities. And I'll do everything that I can to make sure every student has what he or she needs. So thank you for having me.
On behalf of the board, I want to say welcome. We met a convocation. We are very excited to have you. I think as part of the team, I think you'll be a very, you're a very important add, something this board was advocating for. Thank you to the interview team for all your work and for bringing such a qualified and capable and dedicated professional. And I'm really looking forward to the work ahead. And welcome. I'm glad to hear that your first day in the schools was a, was a great one, it sounds like. Any comments for the board besides welcome? Thank you, and thank you for being here tonight.
Welcome, Janine. Thank you. Thanks, James. Next, last time we met, last week, you received at your table copies of the Pullman and Comley Legislative Summary, all the new laws affecting education that have been adopted in last year's session of the General Assembly. I'm just looking for my copy here so I can hold it up so you can see what it looked like. And I want to just mention a few of these that jumped out at me, but there are several, and they are extensive. And we would welcome your follow-up comments or questions as time goes by. One, the General Assembly has authorized public bodies, including Boards of Education, to continue to hold meetings by remote. This, as you know, was adopted as a COVID procedure, but the General Assembly has removed the sunset provision of that. So it is allowable for public bodies to meet by remote means. Second, beginning this year, teachers have the right to request a behavior intervention meeting regarding disruptive students. So if they feel that a child's needs are such that instructions being impeded or others maybe are being endangered, they can request, and we are required to convene a meeting to address that subject. Third, the age limit under which a student can be treated as a special education student for special education services was moved up from 21 to 22. Next, there is a requirement beginning this October that Boards of Ed must allow reasonable employee leaves for folks who need to seek attention related to domestic violence. That could be medical, counseling, or other related services. The law now also requires that paraeducators participate in programs of professional development of at least 18 hours. So we need to address that. The law now also allows nurses to administer opioid antagonists, the one that I know of is commonly known as Narcon, that they can do this on an emergency basis without prior written authorization. That's as of this past July. The law now requires that boards adopt a policy that identifies students in grades eight and nine who may be eligible to enroll in advanced courses. The law also requires that boards have a policy for the equitable identification of gifted and talented students. As I say, these are the ones that jumped out at me. There are many more. You have them. And if there's an interest either at this table or in one of the committees to get into any of this in greater detail, we had an attorney from Shipman Goodman, who was out here during the administrative advance to discuss these in detail with our leadership team. So you have your reading before you.
Any questions for Dr. Tracy?
Okay, get back to my agenda here. Just a quick school opening update. I think with the notable exception of the heat that we've already talked about, it seemed to me that we had a smooth school opening. I enjoyed riding the bus yesterday morning with Mr. Serge Giante. He took me on a tour of Ward High School and Woods Middle School, and we ended up at the Stratfield Elementary School. I'll tell you, the high school bus was very quiet. I think they were mostly asleep. The middle school bus was bubbly, and the elementary school was chattery. And as I mentioned in the convocation some of you were at, that the thing the kids all want to know about is who's your teacher? And that's what the little kids were all talking about. It's really, it's really true. So that was, that was an early but interesting way to start the day. You're going to hear in a little while about remaining personnel vacancies that we're working on and the elementary enrollment and class section issues. But by and large, it seemed to me we had a good first day.
Any questions about the first day? No, okay.
Two down, 178 to go then. Let me ask Dr. Parrish to come forward at this point to update you on elementary school enrollment and decisions that have been made with respect to sections that keep us within the great class size, class size thresholds that are stated in your budget. Dr. Parrish, thank you.
Good evening, Boards. Kia Parish, Deputy Superintendent. There is an updated copy of the enrollment report that's been provided with you as of today. It should have been put at the table for each of the board members, and it will also be posted to the website for the public to be able to view. So this was run as of today. And the reason why it was run is because we did have a number of registration appointments that were scheduled for this week. And so we wanted to ensure that we had as much as possible the most updated information as it relates to some of the section numbers. I know that that has been a hot topic in terms of conversation. So we wanted to make sure that we had that information available for the board. So as of today, actually as of this afternoon, we have 31 more students enrolled in the elementary schools than the projection. And that's noted on the last page of the actual enrollment report. So we were projected to have 3,999 students. And as of this afternoon, we have 4,030 students enrolled in our elementary schools. There are three schools with one grade level at the class size threshold. And just a reminder, for all schools except for McKinley, the threshold from K to 2 is 23, and 25 for grades three through five. For McKinley, those numbers are 21 for K2 and 23 for grades three through five. And so those three schools that are at the class size threshold is our Burr in grade one, McKinley grade three, and North Stratfield, excuse me, in grade two. There are three elementary schools which actually needed fewer sections than what we budgeted for during the budget development last year. And that is McKinley, one section in grade three. North Stratfield, one section in grade two. And Stratfield, one section in grade five. Additionally, there were two elementary schools who needed one additional section beyond what we budgeted for for their school. Burr, one section in grade five. Osborne Hill, one section in kindergarten. So you'll notice that there are certain schools that, as I mentioned, that are right at the threshold for that particular school. There are others that were just above it by one student, and so that did trigger another section. And those are noted in the report as well as the ones that are one below the actual threshold. I did have our registration office, who has been working nonstop throughout the summer to get parents in and complete the preregistration and onsite registration process. They did provide me with registration appointments for basically the appointments that are scheduled throughout the course of this week. And based on what is scheduled, there aren't any additional registrations that we know of at this point in time that would impact the number of boards, the number of sections that we need total at the elementary level. So as of this afternoon, there are 198 sections that are needed based on the current enrollment. We budgeted for 199. That does imply that we would have one additional teacher beyond what we needed based on the budget. However, because of some recent promotions, not within the district, but promotions to other positions outside of the district, we did have a loss of our EPF at Holland Hill. And so that created a vacancy for that position, which was posted. They plan on taking someone internally, which would then create a vacancy for a classroom teacher. So that teacher would then slide into that spot. So we would have no vacant positions at the elementary level, and we would not be over in terms of having additional teachers beyond what we budgeted for.
Thank you, Dr. Parrish. Any questions about the enrollment numbers? Mrs. Maxine Cannelly?
Just one. So and I'm actually, I should know the answer to this, and I don't. What is Fairfield Public Schools' approach towards these sections? Those three, those three grades at those three schools that are at the threshold, one more student, in theory, should open up a new section. Will that happen? And up to what point then do we close that off and say, this is where we are? Because we have on occasion had to go above, but that's because of the timing. So what, how does that work?
Dr. Parrish, we talked about this. I think we both know the answer, but why don't you go ahead and explain that?
So historically, or at least the past two years that I've been here, what we've done is that for the next week or so, if that happened, we would look at potentially increasing the number of sections and redistributing the students. At that point, it's a little bit difficult because they've bonded with their classmates, they've bonded with their teacher. So it's something that we would look at very carefully and in consultation with the building principal, make a decision based on that. But beyond that, we would look at additional staff that might be available to support that teacher. And it is something that we continue to monitor. I think I am scheduled to be back in front of you to report on this at the second September meeting because we pretty much end this, this part of the reporting as of October 1st because that's when we report our PSIS numbers.
You're welcome. Ms. Kelly?
I don't know if now is the time to ask this or if this, if we were going to talk separately about the math students going from fourth to fifth grade and affecting class sizes. Is now the time to talk about that? Or should I wait?
Mr. Wakeman's going to be coming up in just a few minutes, and he's ready on that topic.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks.
Seeing none?
I just want to thank Dr. Parrish and the elementary principals for watching these numbers. It's a tough job. You cannot predict or control registrations. We know parents are concerned about class sizes as are teachers, but they've watched it carefully throughout the summer. And so far, we've landed in a good place. So thank you.
Ms. Asa?
Just one quick question. Historically, or going back two years or beyond, if anyone else knows, is this a trend that's increasing? I mean, I don't remember this many new students being added the first couple of days or the first week of school in recent past.
I will say for the last two years, it has been. I think historically, they have had a lot of activity in the month of August because we have solicited support from some of our 10 and 10 and a half, actually 10 and a half month secretaries to come in and support the registration office. So it is something that they've seen increase during the month of August. I think the last two years, it's been even more so. Definitely last year with the kindergarten, if you all remember, we had a lot of parents that made a family decision to hold their child back. And so they brought them back at the start of last year. And so we did have a large influx of kindergartners, which you'll see now in the grade one sections. But historically, they have had a lot of activity in August. Some schools more than others.
I understand August, but my question is like now. Like, it seems like they're very busy now.
I will say over the last two years, they have been. But historically, I'm not sure in terms of the volume, the first week of school. I know last year, we had even more appointments than we do right now. I will say it's tapering off this week. As of right now, they have very few appointments remaining that are booked for the rest of the week.
It's just making me think food for thought that we should look at how we approach this over the next year, leading into the next registration cycle, and see if there's any additional outreach or marketing or whatever we can do to try and see if we can get people. I know it's always a battle. But maybe reaching out to other districts and just seeing what everyone else is doing to see if there's anything we're not doing that we could maybe do easily.
I have a follow-up to it. Go ahead, Mrs. Maxine Cannelly.
Do you have any sense of, is this movement into the district? Is this someone switching from private, families switching from private to public, homeschool to public? Do you have any sense of the characterization of, I mean, again, 31 in the last two days, I agree, seems striking.
There is a lot of movement into the district. We are seeing a lot of, when they come with their registration documents, closing documents for houses. But there are some that are returning from private school. I would say homeschool very minimal, but we do have a combination of the other two.
And that was really my question. I was curious of how many are coming from potentially out of state. You know, I grew up in New York, and it was a shock coming to Connecticut and finding out that school started before Labor Day. So people might not even realize it until they get here that they need to register their, that school's starting and they're moving in. So thank you very much for the update. We look forward to the next update, our next meeting. And thank you to all the staff that work so hard to get these numbers for us and get our families registered.
Thank you.
And next, if I could invite Ms. Kanika Ingram to come up to the table, our Executive Director for Human Resources. And Ms. Ingram is going to report to you on vacancies remaining. Before she does that, though, I really want to commend her and her staff for the dozens of teachers and many other positions that were filled over the summer. She just got here in July, and she has done a marvelous job of making sure that we get the people that we need for our kids. But we still have a few vacancies to deal with, and she's here to talk about that. Thanks, Ms. Ingram.
Thank you, Dr. Tracy. Kanika Ingram, Executive Director of Human Resources. So we opened the school year with two full-time teacher vacancies. As of today, we have one full-time vacancy. We have seven part-time vacancies. We have one support staff vacancy and one part-time support staff vacancy. We are still whittling away at our paraprofessionals. When I last spoke with you all, I believe we had 39. We are at 26. So we are actively recruiting and finding folks to come in and take those positions. I was also asked at the last meeting to give a breakdown as to why are our paraprofessionals leaving? I think Nick, you, Mr. Nicholas, you asked. And so I just want to give you those numbers. So we have 52% who stated at their exit interview that they took another position outside of the district. 2% went into teaching either here in Fairfield Public Schools or in another district. And then we have 56% that categorized as other. And when I say other, I mean retirement, unfortunately deceased, personal reasons, or they were actually terminated. So again, we are actively recruiting. The HR team is working hard to ensure that all of our classrooms are filled with our full-time and part-time teachers, as well as our support staff and our paraprofessionals.
Mr. Peterson?
And just so there's no misunderstanding, the new classrooms that are not being staffed, we're dealing with substitutes, long-term substitutes.
Correct. So that one position and those part-time positions, they do have long-term substitutes, correct?
Thank you.
Ms. Asa?
Just speaking of substitutes, how is our substitute pool looking? It's been a struggle the last couple of years.
It is challenging. But we, Lisa Dokowski in my office has been working miracles. And so we are finding substitutes, but it hasn't been easy.
Ms. Maxine Cannelly?
Just to piggyback on that question, but what about, what do we have as a base pool? Now, I know part of the problem with the substitute in the database is often getting them updated. I'm sure there are substitutes who might be listed who could be deceased, who have long since moved, who are no longer interested. But I'm curious, what do we have as a pool for the daily subs? Not the long-term subs? So that as we head into the cold months, you know, that really was an issue with classes being canceled and no substitute to be found.
So that's what we're working on. So when I first arrived, that's one thing that we did. We went through the substitute database, and we cleared that out. So when I say it's challenging, it is because we don't have a lot of daily subs. What's helping are our student interns from Sacred Heart University or Bridgeport, Fairfield University, that they come in as student teachers for part of the year, and then they become daily subs for the other part. So the more we can pull those students in, it's definitely helping our cause. You're welcome.
Ms. Guernsey?
Just a quick question about the long-term subs. Are you finding that you're able to fill those positions when they're needed? Or are they, in some cases, experiencing just a regular substitute pool?[1798.85]
So that hasn't been that much of a challenge. We're finding that a lot of retired teachers are coming back to substitute as long-term subs, and that is because of the executive order with, from the governor. So that's very helpful.
That's great. Thank you.
Any other questions? I, just about the paraprofessionals, not right now, but can we just have a breakdown by grade? Is it mostly the secondary level, elementary school level?
I can't give you a breakdown, but I can, most of them are special education paraprofessionals.
I would, I would assume that, but do you know if it's mostly elementary or mostly secondary? Mr. Mathucy?
I think it's a mix.
You might be able to phone a friend and come on up.
Right now, most of our open, specialized paraprofessional are at the middle school and high school level.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification, and thank you for the report. Dr. Tracy?
Thank you, Ms. Ingram. And finally, for my part, I'd like to call Mr. Walter Wakeman to the microphone and have him give you an update on a very successful summer accelerated math experience, and including the issue that Ms. Kelly raised about the impact of these kids on fifth-grade math classes coming up. Walter, thank you.
Yes, Walter Wakeman, program director for elementary mathematics, science, and enrichment. First of all, I just would like to say that the program was highly successful this summer. There were, there are currently 37 students who went through this program, who successfully completed it, and that includes taking the end of summer assessment to say that they have enough of the fourth-grade competencies in order to go into fifth-grade mathematics. And I really have to give a huge shout-out to the two teachers that were involved in this for the dedication and work. They started in July 5th and ended August 16th, which took up most of their summer. But Christy McCoy and Chrissy Iona were the two teachers that were teaching these classes throughout the summer. They've done a great deal of planning, preparation. This was a program that started from scratch, so they didn't have a, they were using the fourth-grade curriculum, but it needed, obviously, to be adjusted and modified for them to support these students throughout the summer. And also, the families who dedicated their summer and their children to this work. So they were, we were very pleased with the results that we have seen so far. Currently, there are, all of the schools in fifth grade, even with these students going, entering into fifth grade, there are no sections over 25 in their homeroom courses. There is one school that the homeroom classes each have 24 students, and the school has decided to put the students who are participating in the program in a single math class. And they've worked with the teacher, the teacher's fine with that as well. It's just something that made sense within that school. But that's for that one-hour math class. The remainder of the day, both the sections of that class are 24 students. So we are, just a brief update, it's only the second day of school, but we're kind of monitoring the progress of these students in transitioning into the fifth-grade class, just to make sure that they're successful in the transition. And anecdotally, they seem to be very excited and eager and are taking this responsibility very seriously. So it's kind of, it's, we're off to a good start.
Ms. Guernsey.
Just a couple of questions, and I'm not sure who the first one is for, but I'm just wondering if there are other examples of elementary school programs that exceed sort of our capacity guidelines in this way, like what's happening at Stratfield, whether it's by intention or not? Is there precedent for that, having a classroom, an elementary classroom of 26 at the start of a school year?
I'm not sure. I'd have to check on that. My understanding is that this has been discussed at the school level and the teacher involved was accepting of it, but still a good question. I'd have to go back and see what has happened over recent years to see if that's happened before.
And my question is, because I'm just concerned about the precedent that this could set, and we talk about exceeding these threshold guidelines, and I guess in addition, you know, we were just speaking about our enrollment report and talking about how we were considering possibly bringing additional staff into classrooms that exceeded 25. So I'm just wondering if there's a conversation about bringing additional support in a classroom that might exceed here for our math students.
For this particular situation, that is not a concern, at least with the classroom teacher and with the scheduling. And part of the decision-making honestly had to do with the students and grouping the students together as opposed to in separate classes. So that was part of the thinking that was going into that.
Any other questions? Ms. Kelly?
Hi. I share the same concerns with Ms. Guernsey as far as the precedent we're setting here. I feel like all of us, our inboxes are filled with people, I'm going to use the word begging for another section. And the answer has been that we are monitoring everything closely. Should the numbers reach the threshold, then we'll have a discussion about it. We're staring at one right in the face, 26 kids in a math class at Stratfield. That's wonderful that the teachers are okay with that, and once again, they've gone above and beyond. But it's not fair to the 25 other students in that class who are now sharing, this is my opinion. I just think while it's not costing us anything and we don't need a whole teacher, there is an opportunity cost to those other children who are now in a classroom of 26 kids. And you mentioned only an hour. I was, I thought that the math block was 90 minutes. That's what I think Mike Cummings had told me, that the math block in elementary school is 90 minutes. You can correct me if I'm wrong. But an hour and a half, or even an hour at 26, again, regardless of whether or not the teacher is on board, is unfair to those other students in that classroom. And, you know, maybe we just lucked out now that there's only one class here. You know, I have real concerns about the class in Riverfield, where we're saying, oh, there's 23 kids, three of them get pulled out, but we're bringing up five. Like, that's a lot of, let's hope everything falls into place that day, you know? I feel like it's no secret that I hate everything about this. No secret. I've made that abundantly clear. But this, when we know for a fact, this isn't, let's wait and see, let's give it another week, we know right now there are 26 kids in a math class in Stratfield for a class that's already on the cusp. And to let that go seems not fair to me.
We can take another look at it, Mr. Wakeman and the rest of us, to see what alternatives there might be, but we've given you the picture as it stands today.
And I appreciate that, and I appreciate the transparency, but I feel like knowing what the numbers are and doing nothing about it to stay consistent with the policies of the district is disingenuous. That's how I feel.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Mr. Telly?
Yeah, I just want to echo some of the comments and really just speak for the parents because it's nice to know that the teacher was accommodating, but the board was inundated with emails from the fifth-grade parents at Stratfield, who were not happy with the class size, and asking for another section. So I'm glad the teacher, you know, feels that they can handle the, you know, extra students in the math class. But I remember what it was like being a parent of a child that was in a packed fifth-grade class at Stratfield, and those rooms are not that big. And it's a lot of kids, it's a tight space, and those parents were already upset. And we received, just the volume alone, we received a lot. So I don't know if there's anything that we can do, but it would be helpful, I think, if we could figure out some support for that class, because 26 students is just a lot.
Ms. Maxicelli.
Yeah, I don't disagree with the point, and I don't disagree with the characterization of the, you know, email communication we received from the Stratfield parents. And obviously, the parents who would be most concerned are those students who are struggling to attain the fifth-grade standards. Those are the ones that are greatest of concern. I do appreciate the fact that the two fourth graders are together in the class. So I certainly understand the decision and appreciate the teacher being fine with it and recognize why that was probably the decision made. But I would ask some, I mean, we have an MST professional in the building, that math support person. Could that math person be assigned to that fifth-grade class for that one hour, at least, you know, several times a week? I'm not about to say every day, obviously, it could depend on the material being covered. But that would seem to be a very prudent use of that staff person's time to support those students to, you know, meet that fifth, those fifth-grade standards. And is that possible to have as an assignment?
I think we can look at it. I can't give a answer off the top of my head.
I've taken three suggestions from the board here, and I can go back to the school and have conversations with them. I hear your concerns, public concerns, and we'll see what we can do to work on them.
Just a, go ahead, Ms. Teresa.
I understand you've taken notes from the board and you're going to go back to the schools, but at the table here now, is there any suggestions that you've heard that you're on board with or that you suggest to us as the board?
I had supported the school's decision in, and thinking about the teacher's ability to address this, all the students, 25 students, 26 students. Here in Fairfield, I taught as many as 28 students, so I understand what it is to have a large class. And the, listening to their reasoning and the concerns for the students, the fourth-grade students, that is, and their rationale made sense to me. I did ask some questions about the 25 and 25 and thought about whether that, I mean, just because that's a numbers, strictly from a numbers perspective.
I guess I'm just at a loss as how we're here on the second day of school.
Ms. Teresa.
So I'm just wondering, you know, what has been, we must have had some kind of planning leading up to this to know if this worst-case scenario happens, what we're going to do on day one.
As I'd mentioned, having the conversations with the school, I had supported their, the discussion with the school with the 26-24 arrangement.
Dr. Tracy?
Yeah, I also supported the arrangement that Mr. Wakeman has presented here tonight. I think we all hear the concerns. I'd rather not try to make something up at the table here because this was thoughtfully done with the teachers and the principal in question. And if we're going to go back and see if we can do better, I'd like to do it with them rather than saying something now that tomorrow I find out doesn't work. And I also wanted to clarify that I was party to a lot of the correspondence about the fifth grade at Stratfield, and my answers to those parents were always with respect to whether we were going to open up another fifth-grade section. None of that really addressed the math issue, which is important, and we, we have to address that. But that had to do with the request of several parents to add another section of fifth grade. And my point back to them was that we would watch it, as Dr. Parrish described earlier, and if we went over the threshold, we would indeed add the section. And also to say that that was not the only school that had classes at or near the threshold. And if we were going to lower the threshold, then I would have felt obligated to hire four or five new teachers to treat all schools fairly. So that whole conversation was not about math, it was about sections and hiring new teachers. You've raised some good points, and Mr. Wakeman and I will go back and reconsider with the teachers concerned. I think we have a good plan here. If we can make it better, we will, and in any case, I'll let you know if anything changes.
Thank you, Dr. Tracy. Ms. Kelly?
Along those lines, then, I would just ask that, you know, if we're going to apply this philosophy of asking the teacher if they're okay, then based on these projections, if we keep getting enrollment numbers where we might get a fifth grade, we need to add another section of those two classes, we get one more people over the threshold, are we just going to ask the teacher if they're okay having that student instead of adding a class section? I think that's the precedent that we're setting here. Oh, the teacher's okay with it. So I just, it doesn't sit well with me at all, so.
I'm not looking to, I think that Dr. Tracy gave his closing remarks. I have just one question, sort of a follow-up, in terms of, and I don't want to get into specifics on schools, but through the course of the day, students do leave the classroom potentially for specialized services. So it's, while these numbers are 25, is it, is it a chance that throughout the course of the day, there might be less students in a classroom of 25? Because they may be are meeting with the MST to receive?
Oh, sure. I mean, it ebbs and flows throughout the school day. That doesn't reduce the teacher's obligation to all of those kids, just because at this moment, maybe I've got a couple of kids out in a special ed service. I've still got them on my roll, I still have to talk to their parents, I still have to plan a lesson. But yes, at any given time, the numbers could vary.
Ms. Jacobson.
A different topic is what's going to be happening for next year. So I'm just wondering if not tonight, but in the near future, if we could get an understanding of the timeline and what we're going to be providing for next year? I presume we will need to have a solid answer on that regarding by January for budget purposes, potentially. I would just hope that we have ample time prior to that to go over whatever those options may be in time to take any action or prior to January. So just keep being mindful of those kids for next year. Thank you.
Lily.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wakeman.
Nope, that's it for me. Thank you, Mr. Wakeman.
Moving on to committee liaison reports. Does anybody have anything to report? Ms. Rotelli?
So SEPTA, the Special Education PTA, for everybody out there, is happy to announce our first meeting on September 28th. It's Wednesday, 7:30 in the McKinley Cafeteria with special guest star, Mr. Rob Mancusi. Introducing all of our directors, meeting all of our parents. It'd be great to see everybody in person, and I just want to remind everyone, as you're joining your individual PTAs, don't forget about SEPTA. We represent all 18 schools, so go to FairfieldSEPTA.org and fill out your membership, and I'll see you there.
Thank you. Any other? Ms. Teresa.
So just a couple updates on transportation committee. So thank you to the transportation staff, the building staff, the principals, first student for working hard. They've gotten through their first two days, which we know always come with some hiccups. It sounds like all students were home by 4:50 on the first day. And I know that sounds really late, but don't forget that some buses are arriving late. So I happened to be at Riverfield and saw that one of the buses didn't get there, you know, till after the middle school run. So we know in the first couple of weeks, those routes go a little longer, but that came down by four minutes today, so we're on the right track. And just a couple reminders that as we look at ridership, remember that we have to give, you know, a full month in. So ridership numbers really aren't finalized until October, and we always start to get emails soon about space available for if you are not, if you're a walker and you would like to request a bus stop, or to be added to a bus route that's existing, that may pass by your house or whatnot. And just for, a reminder for the parents out there to know that those don't really start happening until October. So yes, you can get your requests in now, but please be patient and just know that in October is when those space availables are determined. If you do have a safety concern, please, you know, speak to your building principal and also email the bus service email, and they will look at those and handle those as they come in. Again, please be patient as they are very busy the first couple of weeks of school. And, you know, another thing, last year, we were able to get through the school year without any major interruptions in bus transportation while other surrounding districts were having major problems. So we lucked out. The driver shortage is still real. You know, we're running 102 routes with 109 drivers currently. So that is significantly lower than in years past, pre-pandemic, but they are making it happen. So again, just asking for patience, and if you do have a safety concern, please send in your, in your concern via email. Thank you.
Ms. Teresa, go ahead.
I forgot one thing, and this is an exciting thing. The first student has, has an app called First View, and the plan is to start rolling that out to elementary schools, one school at a time, again, in October. And what this app does for parents that are interested, you can actually see where the bus is in location and set geofence alerts. So when the bus is getting closer to your house, you get an alert on your phone, so you know, but you can also see on the app when it did its drop-off at the school, so you know your kid was safe. We are focusing on the elementary level because We are focusing on the elementary level, because that has always been the most interest from parents, but eventually, it will go on to the other schools.
And this is not a committee report, but this talk of getting to and from school, I don't remember, refresh my memory, board members, crossing guards. Do we report publicly that we have elected to bring the crossing guards in-house? Do you remember? Dr. Tracy?
I don't think we announced that. But we've accomplished it, and they're at their stations.
So I just wanted to share that news with the public, that hopefully, people are seeing their beloved crossing guards, and we're happy that we were able to, to bring those, those crossing guards back, and we're able to do it out of cost savings. So thank you for the work of Mr. Papa George, and we're happy to have our crossing guards with us still. Moving on to committee reports, back to committee reports. Ms. Maxicanelli?
Thank you. Just wanted to give the boards a heads up that we will have a one-and-done policy that we voted on this afternoon at our next full board meeting. This, I don't think it's particularly controversial, but I just wanted to put on your radar that if you do have any questions when you receive it, if you could please let me know sooner rather than later, so I can let Jill Mitchell know if she needs to be here. This is regarding the permission that coaches will now have to administer nasal glucagon to students with type 1 diabetes. It's just a far easier method. It is something that coaches will hopefully be far more comfortable with than anything involving needles. And there is actually a student to whom this policy could very possibly apply, who is a fall athlete, and that is the reason for the expedience of our wanting to put this policy. The coach is going to be notified and receive the training proact, you know, ahead of time, but I just wanted to alert the board that this would be a policy voting item at our next meeting.
Thank you, Mrs. Maxicanelli. Mrs. Gerber?
So things continue to move along nicely with Mill Hill. Most of the punch list items are completed, and they are looking to close out before the end of the calendar year. The library is waiting for final shelving to come in, and the circulation next, next desk needs to be hooked up to the system, but all the major work is now done. So basically, the goal and the thought would be that they will not need to set up any meetings in 2023.
That is exciting, and thank you for your service on yet another building committee, Mrs. Gerber. Any other committee, Ms. Teresa?
I just have a question. Sorry to put you on the spot for, for Finance Committee. I don't remember when, if we have to wait for an update, but just curious if Finance Committee will be in touch with Ms. Laborius on what the final numbers were with the year end closeout and if it varied from what we had?
That, that'll be on an upcoming agenda.
Okay.
Okay, moving on, open board comment. Mrs. Maxicanelli?
I just wanted to thank our current PTA Council President, Katie Flynn, for working with me to help me disseminate information about Odyssey of the Mind to all of our PTAs. The show is going on the road again, where I'm speaking at any interested PTAs, just to try to advertise the program and educate the public about it and hopefully gauge interest and encourage enrollment. So just wanted to put that plug out there, and I'm very hopeful to have some good news to report in coming meetings.
Anyone else? Ms. Teresa?
I just wanted to say thank you to Dr. Tracy, all the central office staff, all the building staff, the teachers, and everybody for once again, getting our school year kicked off at all levels and all schools. So I know it takes a lot, and you all deserve a round of applause, and thank you to all the veterans and all of the new staff. So thank you.
Thank you. For my open board comment, I had the, the pleasure of attending convocation. I was joined by Mrs. Maxicanelli and Mrs. Gerber. It was so wonderful to be with staff in person this year, really humbled and honored to be there. The energy in the room was exciting, made me excited for the year ahead, excited for our kids, excited for the great work that we're going to be, be doing together. And really, to echo Mr. Asa, just thank you for everybody who worked together to get our schools open and everybody back. I, you know, visited some schools yesterday morning and did a drive-by, and, you know, people were, were, aside from some complaints about air conditioning and the heat, people were happy, and it was really, it's good to be back. So thank you.
Thank you both. I'll, I'll make sure to pass that along to the principals and teachers.
Please, please do. Okay, we'll take it to public comment. At this time, invite any members of the public to give comment on agenda items. Please come forward and state your name and address for the record, and three minutes per speaker. Our speaker, our?
Hi there. Katie Flynn, 204 Grandview Road. I will echo what has been said on a personal level. Thank you to our board and our staff all over the district, but this is a personal comment after my first week of school experiences both last year and this year. Both years, I received emails within the first three days of school of changes to sections in my children's grades. Last year, it was opening a new section. This year, it was unfortunately closing a section. So I would, I think my advocacy is, in looking at how we handle enrollment, obviously, this is becoming a changing issue. It could be COVID, it could be not, I'm not sure. But I think aligning enrollment practices with the best interests of education and children is where it should be headed, and that, to me, would be creating some kind of drop date where if we are allowing students to build camaraderie with their classmates, that should begin on the first day of school and not change after that. So I would ask you all to look at that and just align that with your practices moving forward, so that all kids can be entitled to the same experience, whether their enrollment peaks in August or it peaks in March. Because I know, looking at a lot of our 4th and 5th grade sections across the district, whether or not they have math students coming in, they are high. So I think it's something to take a look at. So thank you.
And Ms. Flynn, while you're here, thank you for joining us at the convocation and sharing your greetings with the group.
It is my ultimate pleasure. Thank you all.
Any other members of the public like to give comment? Would you, would you like to give? No pressure, but you wanted to give comment before, and we passed that action item, but now is an opportunity for you to give comment if you so choose. You have to keep your finger on the button.
Thank you, thank you. I'm a quick learner. Okay.
Ms. Jones, just so you know, you, your clock starts, so do not be offended if you're cut off at three minutes.
And I will, I have less.
Speak as much as you want for three minutes.
I have less than three minutes to speak on. And please correct me, because, Dr. Tracy, I'm here to endorse the plan that you've shared. So I'm Gladys Walker Jones, I'm the Education Chair for the Greater Bridgeport NAACP. When I looked at the agenda, it appears to be under old business, so should I be waiting until that time?
We actually took action on it earlier in the meeting. I think you were just, we were very quick. We actually had discussed the plan at two prior meetings. So the board, you know, gave our suggestions, Dr. Tracy and staff incorporated them into the plan, and which is why we took action very quickly. It wasn't a new discussion item, so we voted, and the plan was approved.
Okay, very good. So we want to be on record. So the Greater Bridgeport Executive Board, as well as the Education Committee, which I am the chair, we just want to let you all know that we endorsed the Fairfield Public School Plan for Racial Balance. The plan amended and recommended to the Board of Ed by Intron Superintendent Stephen Tracy. I paid close attention to engage in the community, the equity training for the Board of Ed and district staff, and a highlight for me is improving school climates for all children. So thank you for the work that you're doing.
Way under three minutes.
You were under three minutes.
I believe in efficiency. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, can I have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Peterson, seconded by Mr. Asa, all in favor? Motion carries 9-0. We adjourned. Thank you all for coming. Have a good night.